Just outside the city. Mosquitoes. Overall impact, the basically agreement is for eleven thousand six oh four. County has a. Four oh one said, actually a capsule and all she can actually charge us per based on her population. She can charge us. Eight thousand is about to be on that. That's the total cost of nineteen thousand six. Funding for this comes from.
Um, is there like a. Cut and dry definition of who does what as far as versus the city versus what the county vector control does?
They do preventative, they do. Backing mosquitoes as.
I meant as far as um. It it changes every year, the people that actually come onto our property and actually go out there and either check or do a little they do. Um, this year is going to be really bad down in country acres. Um, like other parts of town that are flooded right now. Um, I was told. Three days ago, uh, by one of the vector control people, uh, that no, that's the city's responsibility, we don't do that. Um, as far as. Uh, doing any sort of preventative for the. Flooded areas of housing developments, whether you're putting in the the pellets or whatever. What what does the county do and what does the city do? And just so we're clear.
The only part the city does is spray. The dog mosquito, mosquito spraying your own, they're gonna get you. That's what we do.
Yeah.
Uh, that's our staff that does county, the other stuff preventative mitigation efforts, that's the county.
What's a lot of.
The county, the miners, they do the traffic call, single monitor it. With us how those numbers are, they'll shoot us an email or give us a little more staff call and say, hey, where you're at. Um, and that. Guy, it is he says a guy hoping to do a spray when the weather is right, because there has to be certain conditions like wind can't be ordered. Five miles an hour, you can't have the temperature too high.
Right, I'm just wondering if they put in those pellets or whatever. Flooded areas, I'll just, I won't even pick on country acres, I'll pick on um. You know, river's edge.
They don't do private lands.
Huh?
They do not do private land.
The county.
County doesn't do private land.
Somebody was in.
Don't go, don't go wherever, but.
Yes, somebody's been in my backyard from the county.
But but guys, for the city, we spray adult mosquitoes, that's what they try.
Yeah, but you're waiting till they're they're active.
Well, the county doesn't prevent it. They gain. They go throughout. It's got to see the county go wherever.
Right, in 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 past, they have walked in my yard, they haven't done anything as far as preventative, but they will do counts in my yard. I am just predicting that the dyke between the different subdivisions of country acres is going to be amazingly bad this year. Like beyond anything I've ever seen.
Yeah, like I said, ask for the city, this agreement, this agreement does the preventative. My county, those efforts for vector control. It allows us to work with them for spraying if we need them, but we do our own spraying. For the preventative, the state not getting a lot of the preventative, that's why we got our agreement.
Right, I didn't know if we could call the county and just ask them if they would be able to do anything.
No, we can ask them. Hey, you guys, can you elaborate more on this, but this. This is your standard.
I I do have a call out to their director, I did not get a return call, so.
Jeff, or anything?
Yep, I want you guys to train me how to use your backpack. I mean that, actually.
That's what, that's what I'm.
Yeah, I mean that, actually.
But this. Our people.
Your vector is.
That's great.
I mean, it depends on how extensive you're asking. Uh, my biggest concern is getting staff time. All right, we we are very limited on public work staff right now. Very difficult, had a whole petition for. Beginning of the year and the applicant, for applicants, preference appointments, doing their agreement for that and. They won, they backed out, so really we're at the well.
So can we, it's nice here that that it's approximately, so it gives a dollar or college. Or application and whatnot, so can all in addition. Thesis.
And that's why we have like that eight thousand dollar extra. We modified that a few, three years ago, add that in. Uh, because we asked if we go above or beyond. I've got the eight thousand there, so it might be something we're able to happen to that.
This is something to be asked seriously. I am. I need to be. Especially. Ability.
So I do want to stress. A lot of those expect on the spraying. All mosquitoes there, we have a few of mosquitoes at all. Um. Our public work staff does a great job, not all the scale population. Four years and I've seen. Director for vector control, tell us almost every year. School control, cities. I dream. Um. However. Not maybe. Same level that folks may expect. And maybe think, oh, I don't need anything like yard or anything like that to have mosquito per yard. That's not what this does, it's still. You cannot get that, especially worse, we have a lot of areas where river can't get right up in there as easily. Two, you have a lot of big lots sprayed from the street. We're not paying back and we're not going through a bunch of people whose private property to spray. Vector may or may not go on the private, staff doesn't get that a whole lot of the aid. They go spraying, it's very from the road. That's the way the wind is going. Uh, we also have not done aerial spraying. Reason why aerial spraying is very expensive. And if you look at horse, where a lot of the challenges we have with mosquito populations are, we're on the river. Tree can't can't be there, really aren't getting a whole lot of mosquitoes. That's why I found the truck base is a more effective horse.
Close one application, the airplane can burn our whole budget and we have a shot.
If it was worth it, then yeah, but everything that I've heard, we would, it would just be more for show for to people that keep asking for it.
And with us not doing there, you know, we like to have that in our back pocket if we ever needed to. Uh, however. They didn't have as much of the weather fly issue, for example, that our neighbor can be sad.
Well.
They were sound dead once around, but not like south, like Fargo or West Fargo and. You can see it as much here in horse, because. We didn't do aerial spraying, yes, individual comes down here, but. So I just want to make sure folks are understanding. You're not giving like a professional service contractor come in, spray your yard quality, this is the help, it's not.
So we're gonna have to use off this. It works.
But we can look at the additional efforts of staff could do preventative or we could have some options. For residence or something, it might be where maybe we're able to put its pellets or something and do it themselves. So we can look at those options, but overall agree that.
All right, anything else on this one, guys, you want to approve, that is, motion approved it?
Second.
Let's move some, Chelsea do the second. Okay, long favor say aye.
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 Here he is, Brett, you got the next one.
Hey, the next one here is regards to amendment to employee handbook. Uh, been working with Lucas for a while and that's fun to. Do quite a few updates, get it current with the changes of HR related laws and practices that you see in the area also to help. Help me, help, help us be more competitive with our neighbors. Um, the big changes here are really regards to IT policies. So we strengthened, added quite a few policies in regards to the IT related, uh, such as like we have a data breach with. Other area that we did. We ran across this last, this last winter. Who do they include weather? Our policy has is basically a vacancy. Um, they're available. Because they don't have to, they're not required to. Um, highlights some challenges, some staff to where some staff was off, some staff wasn't. Um, what we're introducing here, the two employee holidays slash snow days. So if we have a closure of city hall due to weather like the blizzard last year. First. Now we can close it all over single time, but if we have a closure, the employee would have a choice, they can. Work from home. All of our staff has laptops, they could. They. Or they could load in there, loading holiday slash snow day. Also, if in the day, play for example, or another day off, that was important. Think like. It's important to them that they wanted to take that day off, it is one of those quality days. Another big change in regards to. Should sync lead, currently we have. Single lead, that's what we do is combine it all in one. I pay. And also we have the. Employees that. Over four years, they grew eight time off in twenty one days. At forty eight. Twenty seven, eighteen. Example, Fargo, West Fargo. Uh, currently. Did identify a component on employee assistance program? Pretty common in a lot of workplaces, nowhere, your staff that are. They do tell, tell, tell of the work. Different group. There is six point zero nine. Uh, we haven't acknowledged that. Ask, allow us for the app that they're part of. Expect, you know. Well, it's great here. We also identified all the different forms, I feel like there are IT policies, knowledgements, so computer use policy. Personal device registration, so employee uses a personal device. Uh, they went their email, for example. We just know what's on our IT system. Um, Bob for security incident, that'd be a trade range like that. Fished or whatever, there's pictures outlined with the policy now saying this is how we thought. So we identify as all. I like the summary pretty much. Yeah.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of time, but it's because it's some things updated, we had looked at this. Say what it's been to.
About two, uh. Um, three, three and a half years ago.
I was gonna say, it's been a while.
We did the last. Year ago.
And if you saw the one before that, with what, six pages?
On the very first one we had about four years ago, we had before then, we had thirty four pages long. Example, grievance fee, which said three days, it didn't fall by or identify, really, all eyes for that. Uh, it also had a condition there saying that really works, it also along your driveway. So it also happened. But that's not. That was ridiculous.
So it went through some significant updates, probably three, maybe it was four years ago, I know we had to do it that spread away, this is just. As we've gone along here, we still had some deficiencies in here, just kind of get some of this stuff updated, make it more current. Employee retention is a big deal right now. Do things correctly so that we can maintain that.
I have no issues with this, I really appreciate. They're looking to. General sort of. The other stuff that's been. Wait, it's. The teleport thing, section. That's something that I.
Yeah, I thought it looked really good.
Chelsea, she looked it.
I'm really. Company, um. And. It's my point. And.
Any other changes up here that you guys wanted or should look at? You know, we might have missed understanding, you know, we want to make sure that.
No, I don't.
I think, I think one of the things we should do though, I think on a yearly basis, that we should probably keep looking at the rate of our growth. Bringing on new employees here if we go on, something that is probably need. Now, this is longer than it probably should have, so. Just gonna probably make a note of that, that we set this thing. Basis and just make sure that it's the. Why? So.
Question then with this policy, if. Um, we're not gonna have an HR portfolio, does that mean that? Um. Yearly compensation or anything like that, that all just flows through you as far as determining? Um. The the level of compensation that somebody may get for an increase or decrease or whatever, is that only a year decision or is that a council decision? I don't know how that works, it's kind of.
So right now, Brett and I, Chelsea was involved in those two, we're coming up with those right now. Um, I don't know, we still do, I don't know what we want to do in the future compared to you and I, we're gonna talk about it, we have another council member involved in that, those discussions.
Hit hit the holidays, how we've done like cases for example, supervisor, supervisor involved. So. There. Council members, that's how it's been handled. Um. This policy, I'd advise base. So. I serve myself. I serve myself. There. Goes on here. Council sees the need. That's hopefully. In there.
Okay.
Discussion.
Um, as far as discussion of. I'm just wondering about separation of duties that if it matters, uh. I realize this the way it's always been, right or wrong, I guess I don't know, I'm just looking for, you know, discussion as to. How should it be? And I'm not trying to second guess any of your judgment, um.
I don't know, I mean, okay, so thinking back to this, I don't know if there really has been a policy, say, like it's just been kind of ad hoc. Been doing.
Okay.
Um, I'm trying to think even prior to twenty sixteen, I don't, they had a quote HR portfolio, I don't know.
Other cities, do they have any chart portfolios?
Personnel and finances or something.
Okay.
I just, I like the idea of. Transparency, I want other people of I. I just think. It's important to me. And I'm not saying that it has to be me, I know y'all don't want me to take that, I get it. I'm, I, I really think that Jeff would need to raise over HR once Chelsea is off the board. It's a lot of that, obviously.
Yeah.
In everything, so I, I, I do like, I do have an HR portfolio. That's, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I guess. For like interviews and stuff, it does, it gets to be kind of a lot, you know.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, for the mayor, you know, with everything else on the, on your plate, I mean, I think it's definitely helpful to have that other person to be able to do interviews. Um, about things up.
So.
Okay. Yeah.
So.
Okay. Yeah.
Well, that's the.
Most time and mission to. Actually. Well, I have no qualms of some. They're reading all Chelsea, you've been. Something strongly.
Well, they could be. True. Working collaboratively.
Maybe it's not an HR portfolio, maybe like, like I said, it's like, it's not on finances, I mean, it's not necessarily.
Yeah.
Like dealing with necessarily. Issues and. Sounding board more so.
I, I don't remember when the right word.
I know when I first started with all the operations. So it'd be by operations really.
Yeah, I mean, it's all the same.
Or anything, if the mayor wasn't available, it was.
The thing is, is as a, as somebody who works for a company myself, and I don't have an HR. It's very frustrating to me that I don't have an HR, that I don't have. More than one person that I can like, hey, I need to talk to you, I think our staff deserve somebody that they can. If they need to.
I feel like that should be a staff member though, and not really a council member.
I think that's where it needs to get to.
Yeah, of course, it needs to go to where it needs to go first through the chain, but I definitely think that there needs to. Checks and balances involved, so. But I don't have.
We have read, we developed one, we're very into that.
Yes, I, I don't.
We've been working through right then for about. Introducing more of a supervisor structure, supervisor. Or responsibility.
I think that's an assessment here, um, and I would like to see, I have no issue with this, um, I would like to see this amended with an official chart. That includes the decisions discussed here, whatever duties to follow, um, and I think that would be helpful. All part of the single, and it takes some of the pressure off of not only the mayor, but also off his staff. Those people are in constant communication, so it's not just.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, all right, anything else? You guys want to? Agree with the amendment or go up with the changes that are in here then, or?
Then I'll. Just. Sure.
All right.
Uh, yeah, I'll make the emotion, make the motion to approve the handbook amendment.
Can I get a second?
That's one is very enough.
Yes, but there just needs to be.
All right, can I get a second on that?
Yeah, finally get to say, I'm like for Sarah, you already said something once.
Okay, long favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, motion carries, what do you benefit this? Yeah, Lucas, we're going for America on.
Yeah, what is happening?
I literally, I already called my wife today and I said, if I'm home before ten, I'd be surprised.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
The agenda was stacked.
Yeah, I already told my wife, don't even.
Word to everybody.
You're not worried.
Oh, I didn't even think of this. I already, really, that's about to not.
Okay. This one, these next two are in regards to similar like the employee handbook, uh, updates. Proposal or considerations for council, things for council to consider, um. We're trying to be as competitive as possible with our neighbors, we compete with, hate to say it, but we do, we compete with Fargo, West Fargo. Forehead, Gilbert, all for the same point of these, and within private players too. Um, one area that we are off on, geared to our neighbors, Fargo and West Fargo, for example. The health insurance coverage, insurance coverage. Done by Fargo and West Fargo are, they cover eighty seven percent per single, seventy five percent per family. Say a horse, we cover ninety percent per individual, sixty percent per family, so that is one. That we are different on, um. That has been general feedback to teams and staff, and looking at ways that the city could. Prove benefits for the ways to help keep us being ahead of, general feedback that. Or when we're bringing on employees, for example, uh. Kind of here, basically, probably about the fourth of the time. They'll interview employees, ask about them. At least the fourth, if not, sorry, um. This is asked about, we do for coverage for that, that's what we offer. So. Bring that up for council's consideration, the new positions that we have been filling, ours have recently brought on, if we were to go. Case that coverage, we should be fine with our budget still. See them. Uh, you can either keep single at ninety percent, that's fairly closely eighty seven, eighty seven point five, that's what Fargo do. Uh, family, that may do sixty percent. Family, that may do sixty percent, some to keys are doing seventy five percent. The spreadsheet you can see before you, I want to share that, just a table look at that, and what some of the other cities across the state do, and it's all over some, there are quite a few that do a hundred percent across the board. There's some, the news in Fargo, West Fargo. Uh, ours is on a little bit of the lower end for coverage, but if there was a blank, could be right in here. Answer that question.
I'm going to need for.
Yeah, fam- family pit coverage or plus one. Say probably about three percent would be plus one on the half of three horse. Not to call, probably even the same, do the ballpark at least, um, but.
No, not three quarters of the.
About a half of three horse, have at least a plus one or family.
Yeah, I mean, I think when you talk about comparing to the other communities, I think also something to keep in mind is like, the other communities also have like streamlined processes and they have, like, a lot of times more employees doing the jobs um, that our staff is doing, you know, with just a single employee. I mean, I do, I am like a huge proponent for, um, just making sure our staff is, is well cared for because they, they can get put through the wringer, um, you know, with the, with, you know, not trying to like be wasteful or anything like that, obviously, but Brent is definitely right, I mean, when you, when you're a few miles away.
Supposedly want to make circus, very costly to start playing.
And.
We don't want that.
Church is always there. Having happy insurance. I, that insurance.
The, the area that matters, let's see, change, variation right now, retirement side, retirement that paper, these retirements can go to what the retirement system, we don't. However, if it did first, how? Obviously, when land does offer some different benefits in regards to that, like your custom rate weight tiers, also contributions are so here. It's part of, for example, share and our share, six percent of like salary and or six percent match. Ask for that variation now, we consider that. Like, keep them separate or?
Keep them separate.
Yeah, we'll do them separately. So, you guys, I'm going to help through one more.
So, we're sixty in there, or at seventy five, so.
Our neighbors, our neighbors do seventy five, Fargo, West Fargo do seventy five. Grab sixty percent for family, just do seven, eighty, seventy five. Single, please, uh, we do ninety.
Is it meant to budget to cover it?
Should, yeah, but. I call.
Any question?
If you approve the coverage, it's going to cost more, what's the cost?
That's the employer question. It will go from approximately seven thousand dollars a month to around eleven thousand dollars. Like, it is, because we ran through some of those costs.
When's the last time we adjusted forty five?
Health insurance coverage, well, it's bringing up, there's a go around here. At that time, we just, we did a hundred percent period of wait, it's something for. But like I said, I believe it was around seven, uh, eleven also was.
Four thousand dollars.
It went up four thousand, but that is on that seven, uh, the players that we had to already. So, that went up because.
But that's not being accurate.
So, it's, it's misleading.
For our, can I add to our health, our health insurance is actually, it's based on age. So, the older the employee, the higher the premium, the, um, younger employees have lower premiums. So, it wouldn't be.
It's, so it's not like straight across the board.
It's not straight across the board, and then, um, put in some different scenarios, but typically. I mean, for example, um, say, the average would be, it's like five hundred and eighteen per month, which would be like four hundred percent for one employee that's in the mid-range, because anywhere from we have, um, younger employees at four hundred, and then the older employees are.
You're saying five hundred and eighteen dollars a month, average cost per city?
Yes.
And that the city is covering ninety percent of that for a.
For a single.
Okay, so ninety percent of the five hundred is right, and then sixty percent of.
It's a balance or independent.
Yeah, couple hundred dollars more than that for family.
Yeah.
It's for each person.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like two, no, it's like three hundred and eight.
For, for a kid or a minor, for a kid under the thinking under the ballpark, um, this balance would be based on age.
You know, it has to be benefits, that is what I did. I believe that we need evidence. Even we look and we do. These were the sparkle, they're there. Fargo on. Lost more.
Much as I hate to say it, we are competing. Do have, so like direct competition, we have to keep that in mind regardless of the size.
So, we're typically not competing with, uh, Kindred or Castleton. It's the Fargo, West Fargo.
And are we, are we hiring? The same.
Trying to hire the same caliber.
Like, I don't understand in any way, shape, or form, putting employees in those, I'm asking the question, can't we, we have a more than is ask this bro.
More than busy.
More than busy?
Uh, yeah.
Yes.
We, we have a fellow position that we're trying to be fairly competitive with our neighbors on, basically wise. Uh, maybe a little bit on the low end, but when we're trying to compete with the trades in the public sector and private sector, we're not being competitive at all.
For example, Minnesota has, what, five, Mindat has five public works positions open right now, and that's.
And say, Morehead is.
Yeah, that, that's why I mean, they have the city of Morehead, Dilworth, and Wenden.
Yeah, all, everybody's trying, they're like public works in one area, and it's yeah, West Fargo, we haven't gotten into this part, but like savings. Comprer tubes, solve it for some. Something, and, and that's something we haven't even gotten into yet, even, sorry to divulge, I just look at this, but we haven't even got to that, we're tackling these two items first, and that one, we tackle that before.
So, this is part of hiring this part of the team?
This is, uh, more retention.
Retention, this one.
Hiring and retention, actually.
Okay, other questions concerned from the health insurance side of this?
Yeah, I'll get your second.
Yeah. Questions to accept from the insurance.
Excepted.
Thank you, Cruz, how do you want to put it together, Brett and her, Lucas, how do you guys want that motion?
It would be where does council want to go, where do they want gear? There was, I, I suggest that, you know, just single, keep it at ninety ten, where do you want to go up to? Um, the value when the city went from a hundred dollars to ninety ten. Also, at the time, I do waste, do we have some skin in the game? Um, so, um, that's why we're. Family coverage, not be competitive with our neighbors, that's the seventy five, twenty five.
Just sort of like. I understand being we got some issues in the city, but they order for me to feel really offering incentives, okay, not just this. Got to see some performance. iPhone's got to put right into the time for people with concerns, comments, complaints that aren't getting addressed by the city. That's all I hear. That doesn't minimize the hard work that's going on, it just means that we're not a well-oiled machine yet and needing some strategy to be put in place so that duties are getting covered. I have also raised our business that we have had a huge transition that changes in policy. I've worked out of our park building, we have unprecedented growth in our community right now, so to be fair, I think there's going to be a transition, period. Although that was the time asking. But I hope when to other.
I mean, I am really, um, I do think that you guys, that they have really that is, um, I do share your concern. All's dropped and types of things. She's kind of what I was believing to. HR, another person, uh, besides the mayor. I'm okay with not insurance, I would think the time being.
To level.
I don't know, my, my concern is also when you have a B, I have another, um, cost of living adjustment to that, and I'm not impressed as well. So, I mean, we have.
I feel the same way.
It, it just seems like a lot.
Did a cost of living adjustment, one charge this year, and I don't know about you, but I'd love to have a company that need multiple cost of living adjustments every year. But I don't, and I'm not thrilled about this being on the agenda right now. I'd like to give it six more months, I want to see how it works through there, and I want to see how we adjust, and I'm very openly reporting got well done, and making sure that things are situated, but we just got in a new office space. We have a lot of new employees that I have yet to see how they're doing, all the vacations so far are good, but I think I don't want to deserve this until later in the year, I want to do this once a year, I shouldn't have to do this multiple times a year, and while I realize costs are going up, we're all going through that, and not every one of us has the luxury, and we're asking our, our people in town to come up with money for specials, and we're taking forty four thousand dollars off the table for uh, concrete sealed code on the road, but yet our employees are paying us for more, and I'm not saying they don't deserve it, I'm not saying it's not fair. I'm saying, once a year, bottom line, that's what we do. I live this. Well, costs are going up, so now we have to ask for more, and then two months from now, well, the cost went up again, so we need to ask for more. And it's just like APH coming back and saying, you know, and I'm, I'm willing to be fair, right, and we'll almost say, hey, we'll meet you in the middle, we'll do something, and maybe we look at the benefits, I'm looking at this guy and then seeing, okay, we're a little online on the family, the, the individual employee's fair, I don't disagree. As far as the cost of living adjustments, get them on to that one.
Okay. Thoughts?
Um, focusing on, uh, I don't make, uh, I'm not opposed to bringing up the family, um, portion of the health insurance to be competitive with our neighbors around the metro area, um, just because I even, you know, I had my meeting earlier today, uh, saying that some person was quoting in the metro area for Metro Pog, um, I mean, you see it happen, so if I focus on just, A, you know, the health insurance portion of this, yes, I do think we could probably bring that up. And I hope that is reasonable, because like I said, I just, I literally just saw it at a meeting today, so, um, and I know, like I said, Mindat has five openings right now, and they have better, better benefits than we do. And I'm not talking health insurance, I'm talking retirement, so for us to be able to, I don't want to say compete, but even just pick off one of those guys that would come over here for public works, it's going to take some work, so.
That's fair.
Yeah, and I, I just want to say, and I'm not changing Eric's answer, but I completely disagree with the way you approached how things need to change, you know, and just, I felt like it was a little strong as far as like the quality of work that the employees are putting out. I mean, I, I think there's always room for conversations, absolutely, and there's, it's not perfect, but like, I mean, just seeing that office and what everybody has to deal with and like how hard they all work, I, I just wanted to say that I do disagree with that.
That's fair.
No, my line two is on the statement, I, again, I will try, I want to make sure that we are treating our employees with it would be that these, some new people, yeah, we want to, we watch what we do down the road, that's going to be all the time, we're going to be hiring new people as we build it. Sometime, we're going to have to make a call, whether we can do it once a year, if that would be nice, I don't know, probably is going to have that luxury. I'd have to do some adjustments if we start getting the crazy seasons and stuff like what we're currently, that's why decided tonight, we kept having to talk about the cost of living adjustment, because we are talking around the inflation rate that we haven't seen before, right? Sometimes, it's just something that we have to be aware of, but we want to make sure that we retain our employees. I don't want to give a new turnover, that is going to be very costly for the city. Something I want to try and avoid. Cost more than what this is going to cost us right now. I'm willing to sit on this for a while if you guys want, but we're going to keep this one in the back pocket so that we are aware with the changes that we're dealing with. Somebody wants to do the healthcare separate, I'm fine with that, otherwise we can cause both from way.
I'll, I'll make a motion on the healthcare, it, it does seem that, like, that was, um, you know.
Do you want to do the ninety ten, or say you want to do?
I would say, yeah, ninety ten and seventy, seventy thirty or whatever, and.
Seventy five, thirty, twenty five?
Seventy five, twenty five, isn't it?
That's what, that's what the neighbors do, if you want to go up to.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I guess I'm fine with that. So, I'll make that motion, um, to, uh, change the health insurance.
Yeah, okay, single to ninety ten, banning from seventy five, twenty five. Okay, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, just give a second.
See, you got to get their worst after year old in July. Be in July or first, year of July or what time? Couple of birds.
Yeah, first.
It's enough time to switch it.
That's why I was looking at you. Wait for any kind of expression.
It doesn't affect our, our premium, but we pay them. It's just interim.
Yeah, that's why I'm all switching.
Yeah, the first of the month.
Yeah.
All right, so, Joe, give us a motion, Jeff, for the second. I'm going to roll call this one. Sarah? All right.
Hi.
Okay, Chelsea?
Yes.
Naomi?
Yeah.
Sarah? That's, I'm assuming everybody else wants, that motion passes on the cost of living, I'm assuming nobody wants to. Yeah. That one on pause, but we will be having that discussion again. Okay, Jim? Yeah, wake up over there.
I know, we, you're joining the.
We're going to table this one, too.
Certainly, we got these updates, so.
He's awake now. He's awake, we got to go with it.
Um, all of you should have gotten, my phone just said charge the purple fence, so everybody watched it, so.
I had a boy Dick Tracy.
I mean, we get to come into work late tomorrow.
So anyways, we all have gotten, uh, Friday summary sheets, summary sheets. They are starting up again now with construction, so there are only about three projects that are in construction. If you have any questions on it, let me know. I won't take the time to go through these self-explanatory. There's not a whole lot on the first one, just some percentages.
Glad we're getting back to these by the way.
We're getting back to, we're getting back to it, um, eighty-second, I know eighty-second is pretty much done. They're just doing some work. Fine engine striping done today. That's still a south of the high school. That was the truck over there. Various things and, um, Lost River seven should be starting here. Weeks, I think they're just figuring and rubbing here in the next week and start after that. Um, water replacement project right on the, working on West River Road. The main is in, the main has been, um, flushed, tested, and they are working on, um, toll service. Right now it is just a one crew in town. All production has been sidelined. And the agenda for discussion, so, but they are pushing on with that. Action to cast world is really nothing that they can do until the, Peter Ball comes in, they got everything done last year, but it's a time, it's a time frame, so. Uh, the other project I have on there is Wall Avenue. We talked about Wall Avenue West, so we've kind of switched up gears like the last time. And since the public info meeting, we've completely reset personnel working our way to the west wall. Since last month, I mean, a lot of complaints and a lot of comments on the west apps or the cars. We're working on the west, we're going from the bridge through the first intersection into Lost River, so they threw Lost River Road. Uh, right now we've got the typical sections, working on the, we've got typical sections done, we've got the preliminary layouts done. Um, Jorge forgotten to do the appraisals. He is supposed to have this stuff just by the end of the next week. As far as what the appraisals are, are concerned, as we get that, we'll start looking through where our tie points are. There are some areas where we tie in effectively just because of the tie in, the ground to ground is so low, we'll have to work through that. We've got the right away exhibits that we need into Jorge, this is his office. Yeah, we're doing a little bit of question and answer with the east side due to quiet title and smaller things, but I had talked to the utility company about burying some utility lines, burying some overhead power. We are still pushing along. Pickup right now is sovereign land permit, getting into the river for our storm. But, um, we do have, like I said, preliminary segments. Just a matter now of getting all the fine details and all the facing and that stuff put together, so. It is progressive pushing on, um. By, where the pricing comes in, I don't know, but get it out there. We're going to emphasize on getting the road done, working both incidentals up on the outside of the roadway, it's not going up in the net next year. Put a condition of twenty-two, get the road done in the twenty, push it and then shot beyond the roads.
Okay.
That's where we're sitting with that.
So right now, would you be anticipating going for bid sometime about the middle of July then, so if you're thinking? The other question I had for you on that project, Ready Tech has been talking about that there's some issues getting the line over to Lost River, talking about the water project. I'm just asking.
We're meeting with them tomorrow at two. So I, I don't know, specific to the water project or which is Wall Avenue, I know they're, had some issue with getting them in the.
Yeah, so, and I don't know, they're.
Yeah.
They're, you get the rumors in the air type of thing? That's what I thought. I'll ask.
Yeah, so, like, we are meeting with them tomorrow at two o'clock on Wall Avenue to discuss some of that. Yeah, Wall Avenue corridor, see where they can put their line. Basically had to set up preliminary plans for the east side for quite a while since last year. Be using the show, the designer on the wall was going to be, go through that, so.
I'm going to give you a shout later in the day tomorrow then, just to find out what the story is on that, because again, with Lost River, a bunch are kind of looking forward to getting ready to talk out there, so. I'd like to give them an update. Anything else, any more questions for Jim? Yeah, all right, Brent, what do you got?
Hey, first one I have is ISO rating. You do two, there's two different types of ISO ratings. One is for fire coverage, the other one is for building inspections. Um, fire, we're requesting, Dave, I don't know if we sent that letter yet or.
Yeah, we're, we're.
Yeah, we're, we're canary requesting delay on that due to projects like our, like project connection to cast rule that will be able to help us achieve a better ISO rating. Just every couple of years. The other component of ISO though is they, they come and do an audit of our building inspection site.
Are they going to, they're coming this time?
They've already done it.
Oh.
So.
Did it gallop?
They came by, they did inspections of our, or an audit of our building inspection site, our previous ISO rating, so ISO was up to it. It's like, oh, you want a little more support, though. Fargo is a four, we were a nine, they got down to a five.
Ooh, nice.
Appears in how much we improved our ISO rating for the building inspection site. Now, there is debate of how relevant ISO ratings are in insurance world, so insurance companies use it for rating, uh, cities. Like to review building inspections or fire to help determine insurance rates. But having it jump from drop down from nine to four is a big change. Very happy about that. Uh, a lot of the things that we can do in the future are really. It's kind of hitting things that just add up, like tenth of a point here, tenth of a point there, and that will only get us down in the future. Uh, like I said, we're very proud of dropping from four. And seeing that favors or building inspections, I'm still muted. There's other Canadians in their intro area. They are higher than that five. Um, I said, very proud of that. Reminder, um, executive state elections here at the fire hall, uh, fourteenth. So just a reminder for everybody about that. Um, Park Drive, Sarah, the fence is done.
Thank you.
So.
I'll keep going to there.
Go take a look at it. I did drive by it, uh, late last week and hoping they did a very good job on it. They did not get out, they blocked each one.
This is incredible, this is wonderful.
So yes, the fence was done, and then other news on that fence is we were able to have our work staff, well, some of the repairs, the fence went out. So they, we got the bill for the new fence, the fence came in twenty-seven thousand five fifty-nine, about fourteen thousand dollars cheaper than. Progress to go a little here.
What about me? It's in the before gas broke, so that's what I need to hear. That's good, that's a compliment.
Good things, Sarah, come on, you have good things.
Good, okay.
The other thing we have is, uh, Lucas and Sheriff's Department, now we've been looking at the parking organs, we called. Um, got some, some fair feedback back from the Sheriff's Department, think we'll rather be in the point here. Possibly had the expense being for parking organs consideration. Because I didn't really have much. That's where we had a meeting a while back. Library review. Look, step one or nine. Hopefully a next one. With that review of the parking organs, parking organs, five elements, addressing parking, I want to remind everybody that once we have the parking organs done. Then the next step of that is to address, you have no parking zones. Level, things like that. Next level review after you have the parking organs updated, we know we can base it on. You may have situations where we'd like to do some of those changes for parking, we may be able to have, like parking, for example. Sign, signage, we have certain areas that have it, uh, the overall look where those established, such as like in neighborhoods based on physical dimensions of the street. Road width, we have some situations where it's no parking. Both sides, sometimes it'll be no parking on one side, other times it'd be parking lot on both sides, street width. Um, also we're in situations where it's parking from this and that time, but you. So there's a lot of different variables tied to that, uh, but we want to make sure you have that. Not a little problem. And we're looking to address the new developments. It's easier to address. We have the dimensions, easier to do.
We got equal part.
We can get into the existing neighborhoods, yeah, no parking signs, we think a lot of it. Signage is taking longer.
So everything else.
Yep. Go on.
All right, um, portfolio reports, um, banners were up, obviously. We did the parade on the twenty-ninth. There was about half the kids were there, there are some, I mean, sporting things are going on, unlike the first year when we had the pandemic, everybody was under those banners, but there was nothing going on, but now there's school activities and stuff, but. Each one of the kids got five bucks from a generous donator and, uh, so it was kind of fun, get the honk the horns out of them and all that stuff. The other thing I was going to mention too, that if people are going to be holding block parties, and we certainly encourage that around town, that they get a hold of the city if they want some streets blocked off. Uh, make sure that you let us know if it's barned up at a time, but like I said, we encourage block parties, get to know your neighbors. But make sure the city's aware of it, you guys need some roads blocked off. All right, that's what I got. Sarah, what do you got?
Um, I'm trying to make some quick here, a lot of. Thank you for the updates, um, I had a. Enjoyed the parade, had a great time, really, really fun seeing our seniors. I humped all the way down the street and was like waving out my window like crazy.
And she was.
I was. Um, I wanted to follow up and see if there had been any. Policy for, for guarding all the trees, if not, I'm going to. Sure, something I'm going to put. And I also wanted to. Just mentioned it was the layout signage, the J break signs and the limited signs, but busy, the J break signage.
Lead, both versus. County. If it's good talking, really. I'm sorry, all establishments, I mean, for, for.
Thanks, as soon as we get that subject. Figure out. Been doing a lot of this thing. While I'm campaigning, that. Focus on the. Um, and it actually, one of the topics came up earlier today. Dirt bikes, APDs, smoke kills. I'm here, I heard Barry talking about how they're lining up the mouth avenue, and I was over. Hold it apart, and it's. Someday I got here from. Didn't seem to be so much there, but a lot of the new people didn't have a lot of these toys, right? These families, and they're inexpensive for their children. Um, I would tell you that I realized there's an upside, a downside to those activities, and so, um, in one way, they can be a really good activity, they keep kids, they're hard to drug. Is riding late, they're in danger, you know, but I'd like to open a conversation, um, on designated paths for their bikes. And safely out of town, self-destructing. Whoever's residence. I also had a really nice discussion with, uh, somehow the oxygen's back coming, she was very concerned about some of the, the, very responsible. And if you know me, you know that I've been quite vocal about the level of water in our ponds and whatnot, because every year, one of the cities, whether it be US Harbor or Far, has some, or a kid that clearly dies or does impact ground in one. So I'd like to open a discussion about how we are going to protect those areas, just like we've done in all the schools. But that's, I don't know if that's the answer, or if, uh, there's a way that we can get their access, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I'd like to have discussions like that. Um, I had a really nice conversation, uh. With some officials, they, that are talking about some of the upcoming. Fire and fire, you know, how we're going to tackle that as we grow, especially with. Larger buildings that may have that, there's some old like structures, there are bigger buildings coming. Kind of talking about how we're going to, ever, with our rural fire department, that, you know, our city fire department, the urban fire department, and we're more volunteer, right? And these guys work really hard, they do a lot of good things for us, but there's limitations to their capability and their budget. And so having some of those discussions about where we go and how you get there over the course of the next, I think is important. And so maybe that's a discussion that we have with Jesse, who came last time, who was. And along. I know we've already had some. Looking at, uh, some expansion. I can fit some of those, the first ones. And then. Parking obviously was on there, but we've already addressed that, so they spread that to pull up there, and then, uh, we found out from another restaurant that we didn't have a little. And thank you for, for jumping in on very, very short notice. Thank you to white people. Join their call. That we could be a partner in work. Um, those are the things that, everybody's dealing with shortages, so. It can be difficult to see how it passes. It's all I have.
Okay, here we go.
Uh, I wanted. Um, but. And I don't know how it's. Have everybody come to. Um, so I'm really, really hard at finding beginning of camp. A little bit discussed now about that. That, if you are involved in that, um, definitely. Talk about, um. I was driving by. All the other day, I just wanted to. If we could make sure that all of those. Ever, I have. Sure, every single. And that no child can get. Um, I heard that, I saw some of them. On that, but it's very dangerous and not a lot of child getting stuck in one of. I know when I'm a kid. They're going to be running around, so let's make sure that those are, uh, buttoned up really tight.
It's like just tie it like a string around or something or something, secure or not.
Some things will be expressed.
That's why I make sure.
Hey, I'm not laughing on that. It's a great thing.
I didn't go ahead and.
Um, I know, but kids do some funny things, okay, so we'd be happy. Um, I do want to say, um.
the really good. When I asked him to do. Um, disappointed. We're working on it. I took my kid up there to play and there was dead animals up there. Couldn't play volleyball, nothing. It's just, it was all control and. I asked him to do. Um, he didn't put the volleyball net up so I got him to play volleyball. So, um, I, I didn't show out. Can I call Tom? How do I respond to that? Through the park district. Oh, through the park district, but I had just emailed the park district that I. Um, but, and then I also want to say good luck. Actually, everybody. Sarah, Scott and Grant. So. Yes, yes. Hi, Grant.
Hi.
Um, so yes, just good luck and. Guys all.
Chelsea?
Open.
What? Nothing.
Uh, no, not good.
All right. Jeff, what do you got?
Um, good question for Jim. Um, a few weeks ago, probably been a last meeting in time frame. Um, have we ever tested the, the pumps for the lakes out in Main Mall Lakes yet?
Did once, one was working, one wasn't working. They now have fixed that. And I have been in discussions to. Get them.
Got it.
Do we have a full test?
I just happened to notice a lot more water in the ditches all of a sudden for no reason. I was like.
Those are digging running.
Okay.
So the pump started about two weeks ago.
Okay.
One pump had an issue that they had to pull the pump, but it was really hot that day. So they have now pulled that pump and, um.
We haven't closed that project yet because that, have we?
Haven't.
Okay. So let me hear. Other than that, that's all I got. So I will, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Can I get a second? Chelsea, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All done.
I mean, I just.